Okay, welcome. Madam Clerk, if you would take the roll call?
Certainly. Mr. Luther.
Here.
Ms. Nelson.
Present.
Ms. Reclu.
Present.
Ms. Sebacher.
Here.
Mr. Stone.
Here.
Mr. Washington.
Here.
Mr. West and Mr. Combs.
Here.
Seven council members present and one absent.
All right, at this time Pastor Williamson is here to do our indication.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, I'll begin this session tonight by remembering the recent passing of a 33-year servant to this city, Gene Wolfmeyer. We remember his family tonight and, Lord, the grief that sustains them in times such as these, grief that we all share when we lose someone we love. Gene served this city first as a police officer and then was the first head of the traffic department for the city of Fulton. Thirty-three years of his life, we're grateful tonight to remember him. I want to thank you, Lord, for all the faithful servants who continue to this day to serve this community and keep us moving forward together as one. I'm grateful for our mayor, our council persons, all of our administrative staff, and everyone, Lord, who is vital to the work that's done each day. And I especially pray this prayer in light of those that are working in this tremendous heat, those that are on our streets doing infrastructure work, our firefighters and police officers and others that may have to face these elements. Dear Lord, we pray for their safety and well-being as they serve we, the people. I'm grateful for our nation tonight. I pray for the folks in Ukraine. We just ask you to continue to bless and encourage them in their fight for liberty and freedom. And I pray, Lord, for the American soldier who continues to keep our nation both safe and free. This session, bless it tonight, all the work that's done, discussions held, and any decisions that are made, we pray that they first be pleasing to you. I'm really blessed to see so many from the community come to share. That's what makes government strong, is the people that we serve. Thank you for their presence here. Guide us all, Lord, and let us live for you. And please bless our city family and any in it who are dealing with bereavement or sickness, trial or affliction. Just offer them your soulless comfort and peace. We pray this together with one voice in Christ our Lord. Amen. Face the flag. Attention, salute and pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor.
Privilege, sir.
Okay, at this time, we have a special project that's been going on. We're going to be recognized by our Rotarians on behalf of the Afghan resettlement project. They were recognized and they'd like to present us with the...I'll just let you guys tell what to do.
We'll all come up here, but we have rehearsed this, so we can't all chorus the words. We appreciate that the mayor and city council accept this plaque on behalf of the Fulton community. One of the smartest things the volunteers at the beginning of the Fulton Afghan resettlement project did was realize that the Rotary Club could not do this by itself, could not do this without a lot of help in the community. Because this has been a community effort, our city hall is the best place we can think of to house this recognition of the community involvement. It's a plaque presented to our community in appreciation of the Fulton community for your service to Catholic charities of central and northern Missouri as members of the community-sponsored program and your commitment to refugee resettlement. Those images we saw last August in Afghanistan, the chaotic evacuation of U.S. and sympathetic Afghans who had worked with them raised the question, what can we do about this? And the answer was, help those fleeing their homes to find homes in the U.S. We learned that Catholic Charities of Central and Northern Missouri was the not-for-profit agency authorized by the U.S. government for Afghan resettlement in this area. We started working with Catholic charities and the community came to help. One church allowed us to use its building to gather the community for meetings to figure out what the heck we were doing and for more meetings and for English-language classes for our adults. Another church provides and continues to provide use of storage space for hundreds and perhaps thousands of items donated so that our newcomers would have clothes, housewares, bedding, bicycles, and other items for their new homes. The children of another church gathered items to contribute. Another church allows access to its food bank and baby needs collection. The Callaway County Ambulance District has a staff member who trained volunteers and Afghan parents on the installation of child car seats and then provided car seats for those children. And through today, we're still transporting Afghans all over mid-Missouri, it seems. Serve Incorporated provides access to its food bank for these families. The Callaway County Health Department, Callaway physicians, have accommodated dozens of new clients, new patients with health care, the likes of which none of our newcomers had ever experienced. Westminster College pledged financial support and provided iPads for each family. Westminster Fraternity provides housing for one family in a building which it was not using in the past school year. Fulton Public Schools faculty and staff welcomed the non-English-speaking Afghan children into elementary, middle, and high school. Individuals hearing the program donated those items which filled that church basement or went directly into new homes for the Afghans. The city of Fulton and Fulton Police Department provided traffic control devices to protect the safety of the Afghan children who were lifted from rural family compounds to homes on streets where they must cope with American drivers. A Fulton business went out of its way to open its hiring process to the men whose most recent job had been as soldiers for the U.S. government. These men were not in the Afghan Army. They were in service to the United States, actually, in their country. To the police department and also to the community as a whole, I give credit for the answer that one of these men, who had spent 20 years fighting against the Taliban in his native land, gives when he is asked, what of his life in Fulton he most appreciates? And that is the feeling of safety. We're glad to live in a community which has provided so much for our five families, 10 adults, 30 children, who had so little when they arrived. And we appreciate the opportunity to share with the Fulton community this plaque marking what the community has accomplished. Though they're not legally citizens of our country yet, they already are contributing as hard-working, tax-paying, and participating citizens. A friend told me of encountering a non-English-speaking man in a store. He didn't know the man, and the man came over to help him lift that heavy bag into his cart. His description of the man, including the three-wheeled bicycle that the fellow had with him, identified the man to me as one of our Afghan newcomers. When I commented to the Afghan bag lifter what a wonderful thing he had done and what a great impression he had made, he humbly replied, "That's what we do." And that's what the Fulton community has done for these Afghans, so.
Let me come down there and get a picture.
Very good.
Appreciate all that you guys are doing there. It makes me proud to have our community step up in this way. You all have been a big part of that, so we thank you. And the American spirit is still alive in this country. It's amazing. Thank you guys very much. We'll display proudly. I'll make brief mention. Today, we were looking for a photographer. Today was our last day for Darren Wernick, our public information officer. And he's been here, he had been here for 12 years. He took that role as a new job opening that we had. We created that job, and he did it faithfully, and we appreciate his service, so. And there's a job posting out there for anybody that's interested in replacing him, so. Okay, next up, we have public hearings. The first one is for the purpose of considering the rezoning of two tracts of land located at Two Arrow and 1302 Coats and Desen Road, Fulton, Missouri, from their current zoning of R1 residential to R3 residential. The format will be as follows. I'll issue three calls for anyone wishing to speak in opposition, then three calls for anyone who wishes to speak in favor. And we ask that you come to the podium, state your name and address. And at this time, the hearing is now declared open. Will be first call, anyone here present who wishes to speak in opposition of this matter. And second call. And third call, anyone present who wishes to speak in opposition. Hearing done, we'll move on to anyone wishing to speak in favor of the matter. First call, anyone present wishing to speak in favor of this matter.
Good evening. I'm David McDaniel, the Brooklyn Central 21 McDaniel Realty here in Fulton. I live at 826 Cork Street. I represent the owners of this property, and I'm sure Dennis will go into explanation on why we're asking for it to be rezoned, but I support and wish for you all to approve this tonight. So, thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
Okay, second call, anyone else present wishing to speak in favor of this matter? And third call, anyone wishing to speak in favor? Okay, the public hearing is now closed, and we'll move on to our next hearing. This one is about a tract of land located at 1300 Coats and Desen Road, Fulton, Missouri, from its current zoning of R1 to R3. And at this time, the hearing is open. First call for anyone present wishing to speak in opposition of this matter. Second call. And third call, anyone here wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, moving on. Next, we'll do folks wishing to speak in favor. First call, anyone here wishing to speak in favor of this matter?
David McDaniel, 826 Cork Street. This property actually joins the other two properties, but anyway, we're asking for it to be approved.
Very good. Thank you, David. Okay, anyone else here, second call? And third call, anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this matter? Seeing no one come, the public hearing will now be closed. Okay, next up, we do have comments from visitors. In the same situation, if you have a comment you'd like to say to the council and myself, step to the podium, give us your name and address, and keep your comment to five minutes or less, please. We do have a guest coming forward.
My name is Catherine Gozer, 1207 Bradley Lane. I hope to beg your forgiveness, I had recently heard that there is going to be a new trash ordinance and the trash container ordinances. I thought there had been one in place already, and I thought tonight was going to be the first reading, but apparently it's the second reading. But I would like to make a few comments. What I understood from the nice lady at the city hall who read the ordinance to me, it is a change in that there is no time, whereas previously in the other ordinance, you put out your trash cart at 4:00 P.M., no sooner, on the night before the trash is picked up, and then it had to be removed by 8:00 of the morning after the day that the trash was picked up. So I'm a little confused. But I wanted to bring to light a couple of points that I wanted you to consider in this particular ordinance that was read to me. My husband is a senior citizen and has his health issues, but he's not the only one on our block. And the first things that I start thinking about, I counted off more than seven different people in my neighborhood, especially on my block, who may not be able to do this, especially in impermeable weather. And there is one particular part of Bradley Lane where it intersects from Sioux Drive, that's S-I-O-U-X, the Indian tribe name, where it goes to the dead end. And that part, you can't help it if you're, you know, snowplow driver, you can't always get down there. But that would never be picked up or snowplowed until somebody was generous enough to go down and do it for him. There are other people who live on Chippewa in that area who would also have difficulty with that, meeting that requirement, the way I understood it, if there is bad weather. And also, you know, I'd like for you to consider summer heat like this, what we've been experiencing, that the temperatures are such that they cannot be there. And I have to admit that I personally have left my cart out on purpose on my street because it's Bradley Lane, there are no curbs. But we've had incidents of teenagers, unsupervised, sometimes supervised, on motorbikes, ATVs, or other kinds of vehicles that were not licensed, speeding up and down the street to get to that inside of Bradley Lane and get to the property over there. I do this because I want to slow down the people who are speeding by. Our neighborhood has been a, or has been known as a walking neighborhood, and we are fortunate enough that we've got families moving in with elementary and preschool-aged children. Those families and their safety are important to me. And I think that's something to consider, but I am not the only person in our neighborhood who leaves out that trash cart to slow down traffic there. I think that the other thing that I would like to emphasize is that in our neighborhood, Chippewa, Mohawk, Sioux, Apache, Osage, Cherokee, Bradley, that area there, and even Lang Street, those streets are particularly narrow. And I get it, that sometimes those carts are in the way, but I do like that they are out there because traffic coming in from Route Z will fly right on through. And we all know, just sitting there watching, what 30 miles per hour looks like, and we know when we're not seeing it. So, you know, you can't be everywhere all the time, but those are considerations I was hoping you would take into account with this new ordinance with the trash. And I'm hoping that you can implement or some way design this ordinance to accommodate those instances where it may not be reasonable to honor that ordinance. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. We don't have interaction at this time with you, but we'll be talking about this later. We will take your comments under advisement. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else wishing to speak to the council? All right, we'll move on to, we do not have items for consent agenda tonight, so we were gonna shoot right through to new business. Robert Bennett, on behalf of the VFW, Post 2657, is here to present a request for funding for the fireworks display for the Fourth of July.
City council member, thank you. Robert Bennett, I'm the commander of the local VFW, Post 2657. As you know, about last year, we took over the fireworks display for the city. And each year, we go around, we ask for donations to help out with that cost. Last year, it was just a little under $10,000. As you all know, you've done it for years before we took it over. And then this year, it jumped up to about $12,000, well, just under, a little under $12,000. But, so, tonight, I think you have something in front of you, people that have already donated. So, basically, long story short, I'm here tonight just to see if the city can help out with that cost a little bit.
We appreciate the work that you've done to get most of the way there. That's fantastic. It's a great thing for the citizens, for the city of Fulton. And I think in the past, we've ponied up, up to $4,000 at some years. And I know the price keeps getting higher, especially now. And it looks like your shortfall is about $3,300. Is that what I'm seeing?
We've gotten a few more donations since that was put out, but I think we're sitting right around. It's probably closer to around $2,500 now, so.
Do you think that you're gonna get any more donations? Is there anybody out there?
Oh, I'm sure. We'll get a few more coming in, ma'am. Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that the city of Fulton provide $2,500 in funding towards the fireworks display that's being sponsored by the VFW.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. I think that would be very appropriate, in my opinion. Is the fireworks display still gonna be at the country club like it normally is? Is that the plan?
Far as I know, yes.
That seems to be a logical plan.
There was a little, with it being up for sale, we didn't know for sure, but far as I know, it hasn't sold, so yes, right now, I believe it's still gonna be there.
So, I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I fully and totally, 110%, support the VFW.
Thank you.
But I have my reservations about fireworks. So, I guess my first question is going to be, you know, I understand that the price of things are going up. Can you tell me exactly what this $11,200, what does that cover? Is that...
It covers the contractor that is licensed to, it covers the fireworks itself and the contractor that's licensed to shoot it.
Okay.
So he sets it all up and takes care of it.
Okay. So, would there be, what is preventing us from having a display at the amount that has been collected already, rather than soliciting for other funding and not having, does that impact the size of the display? Is that, I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, as far as in the past, the size that we have, the, when I understand the type that is, that gives us the, I guess, the boom, the size you see in the sky, the person that's authorized to shoot that type, to be licensed to do that, there's not that many around. I'm trying to think of the class, the classification.
Yeah.
I think it's like a Class IV, Class V, something like that. So, in order for, when you get into that type of class, they're a lot more expensive. They're like the big cannons, and that's what you normally see. When you see that big in the sky like that, that's what you're getting into. That's why they're so expensive. Now, when you get into like the class, the smaller ones, of course, yeah, anybody can shoot those, but...
So the rise in cost has less to do with the contract, when we're to do with the price of the fireworks?
Yes.
Okay, so we couldn't necessarily scale back the display itself to just what we've already raised?
Just like everything else. I mean, just like gas prices.
Sure. And you're fully insured?
Yes.
And the fire department has been there, and they will be available in the event anything happens?
Yeah, we always set that up.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on this? Okay, I'll call for the question. All those in favor, say yes.
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 And opposed, no?
No.
Understood.
One no? Thank you, Robert.
Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Robert.
Okay, next up, we have discussion regarding city employee Legends Rec Flex memberships and discounts for classes and programs through the Parks and Rec Department. And Renee has got some information on this. We've been talking about this for some time.
Thank you, Mayor. So, in an effort to, A, promote healthier options for our staff, as well as giving more equal opportunity for access to our Legends Rec Flex, I have proposed to the mayor and to tonight's council that our employees for the city of Fulton are given an opportunity, and this is full-time employees, are allowed access, free membership to Rec Flex. And we will also continue the 20% discount for classes and programs.
Did you say free?
Free membership, yes. Spouses will have to pay. And, but we're looking at this also as an opportunity to introduce more people to Rec Flex, to, you know, have friends, family, and such to come and also to participate in more of our classes and our programs.
And I think I see this as a wellness program in a way.
Absolutely, yeah.
You have your staff that may be, like me, a little bit out of shape, and it's helped me, so I think it can help others as well.
And I think by doing this, too, it's gonna increase our memberships, because, you know, if you have an employee that is already going, you know, the likelihood of their spouse wanting to go, too, is pretty high. So I think that that's, I think it's a great incentive, too, to offer, you know, to our employees when we're hiring them. You know, I think that it makes us a lot more desirable. And I really think that it would be nice to include all of our Parks and Rec attributes, like the golf course and the Rec Flex and all of those things. So, I just think, again, it makes us, it sets us apart from everybody else when we're offering job positions.
And Clay, if you, would you tell us kind of what you think the impact might be financially if we were to do this?
Yeah. I'm Clay Caswell, Director of Parks and Rec. Right now, we have 10 employees out of around 170, I think around 160, 870, somewhere in there. We have about 10 employees signed up for memberships, two couple memberships, three individual memberships, and five family memberships. So obviously, we're gonna lose that revenue. The suggestion I had made to Ms. Tyler was that we give the employees the free membership, and if they wanted to upgrade to a family or a couple, they would pay the difference. So I'm hoping to recover some of that revenue by bringing in more city employees who bring their families and their spouses and utilize the facility more.
Ms. Tyler, is there an opportunity for part-time employees? I know you very specifically said full-time employee.
Yeah.
I'd like to see an opportunity for part-time employees.
We can work on that.
Maybe not free, maybe not free, but discounted.
But discounted, yeah.
If you're a half-time employee, you pay a half price.
There are several things that we're actually looking at. This is the beginning of conversation frankly, with respect to the benefits that we offer. And as the mayor said, to offer more things that encourage wellness. So, to be honest with you, I'd like to see how this part stays off and then start incorporating some of the other things I don't want to talk about just yet.
Understand.
But this is only the beginning of things that we will be proposing to the council.
Understand.
Might be a bit of a stretch, but would this have any impact on our health care benefits? Might be a bit of a stretch, but would this have any impact on our health care benefits if employees are partic- participating?
It's a premature question, because health benefits is something else that I am examining.
Okay.
So, very good.
Okay.
Along those lines, Councilman. I, I was just sharing with the other councilmen that I think that we went to part-time rate, you know, if it was a half, half price during their time of employment, that they get it at half price. You know, seasonal work people are just working during the summers, and then they, and between that time, maybe offer it to them on a month-to-month basis, half price or something. Just something that in the future, that we may look at.
Do our seasonal employees work enough hours to be considered? No?
Again, there, there, and this is kind of kicking the can a little bit down the road, there are some things that Finance Director and I have to do some modeling, to do some projections, that I would really like to bring to the council to consider, that will center around benefits that we can offer to seasonal slash part-time employees. Not, just not prepared to discuss that yet, because I need to understand what it looks like, especially when you ask, what is the financial impact, so? But just to know that we, we want to make things more attractive, not just for our full-time employees, but absolutely for our seasonal work part-time employees, and especially, we have young people that are in college and high school that are working for us, so what are some of the things that we can do to help them?
Can I ask a question, a little, a little off-topic about that? I've been gone from the council for a year, and I know previously, we had discussed exploring options with businesses, and providing like these group discounts if a business signed up. Has that happened? Has this been?
Uh, we're, we're still putting together the corporate plans.
Okay.
We got some multi-discount that we offer, if you, if you have like a swimming pool pass, a golf pass, things like that. I think we're gonna try to unveil all the corporate packages in the fall, early fall, where people are starting to move back indoors, and see if we can kind of boost the membership a little bit.
But are you asking, like, twenty million discounts and those types of things as well?
Just anything about it?
We, we do have several in place already.
Okay.
It's, it is listed on the website, uh, but, and we are, as, we're looking at expanding that, we, we have, um, various cell phone companies, we offer discounts, there's some other things. There are also, um, restaurants, um, especially in Bridge District, um, there are places that we can show our ID, and we get twenty, we're entitled for twenty percent off, or fifteen percent off. So, um, I think that needs to be better, um, advertised, so that our employees know what the options are. I know they're on the website, but that doesn't always mean that folks know.
Right.
Yeah, I think a lot of times, we are seeing everybody knows, and they don't know, if they don't know.
That's right.
Communication is the key on that.
I didn't know that, so, and I've worked with the state for a long time. Interesting.
I've got a couple of back-to-back questions. Do we have, um, spouses and families that are on our health insurance, like grouped together? And if so, then if we do, wouldn't we not want to then offer them the same, or extend the same to them, as well as a, as like, uh, you were saying, for a wellness program, where if they're healthier, they're obviously gonna have fewer claims?
It would be discounted.
Yeah, okay.
Similar to how we do our health insurance, you know? You still have to pay for your spouse and your friend.
Yeah.
So, we, you know, the conversation that we had was looking at, obviously, um, I think you made mention of paying the difference, so the difference, that's a huge discount, the difference between, you know, free and then whatever is left. So, and to be honest, our rates, we have really good rates, but that doesn't mean that economically, everybody can afford our rates.
Sure.
Because you don't know what bills or what life circumstance throws at folks. So, really looking at a way to make things accessible and as affordable as possible. I, we aren't in a position where we can make it free for everybody, we can't do that. But first and foremost, it would be great to offer our employees the ability to have access to a great gym, and, and, and all the things that it has to offer.
I think it shows appreciation, too.
Do we currently offer anything with regards to rental facilities, like the pavilions or the voice-up cabin?
Yeah, across, across the board, for all Parks and Rec rentals, programs, Tangwood stuff, every, all city employees get a twenty percent discount.
Okay, so, do, do we have a motion yet? I'm sorry. We don't have, I would entertain a motion. To, uh, to accept this free membership for full-time employees.
I think it's a great idea.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion and second, all right, that's what we need.
For clarification, so we've been a lot of discussion throughout all this, but as of now, we're just, the motion is just for the city employees, correct?
That's good.
I'd like for the part-time employees to have some sort of option made available to them soon.
And we may get feedback from the part-time employees, what they hear about this, be like, you might hear and, and think a little bit more.
Jeff, are those, could we put those options together and bring those back to the council?
Yes.
Maybe at a later date.
Yep.
All right. Any other discussion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have discussion on our transformer, solid waste, truck, fire truck, kind of a comprehensive, uh, discussion that we had a work session on tonight, um, already, and we'll continue that. We might need action, um, on a specific item, which would be a fire truck. But basically, the discussion that we had is the economic climate and the production supply chain climate that we're in is creating lots of issues with, um, getting, getting stuff. Transformers, we're, we're, um, lucky to be a, to be able to order something and have something within a year or even two years. So, right now, um, it's a difficult time to budget, um, and, and we're thinking way ahead. This is about a fire truck that, that wouldn't even be delivered to us till 2024. However, we need to make the decision kind of now, um, as to whether we wanna move forward with that.
And, and the solid waste, um, giving them, because we're totally deviating from the procurement process. So, also, given Mr. Boone the authority to allow him to, whether it's exploring opportunities to, without overhauling the current vehicles, as well as exploring, um, used trash trucks, you know, the, just, and, and knowing that, and this is the most important part, if they find something, have that ability to, um, justify going forward and, and putting the, um, at least starting a contract.
Absolutely. Yep, it's just things that we normally do a certain way, just aren't gonna be able to be done that way now, at least for the foreseeable future, so. Good that we're having these, these talks, and it's not good, but it, at least it's good to go with the eyes wide open and see that, you know, things are different now, so.
Do we need to amend for the transformer portion of the work session as well? Got lots of information, but I was lost on the question you were asking this, I apologize.
Yeah.
No, you're fine. Daryl Dunlap, Utility Superintendent. We need to get on the list.
So, this is just a?
We, we need to go ahead and, and, and get ourselves on the list. We just won't have a price certainty of what those transformers will be.
But it's inevitable that we were gonna need these products.
We're gonna need these products.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is there a need for any type of resolution similar to what we're, what we've done in the past, you know, authorizing the mayor to, to sign purchase orders, you know?
So, I think that's?
Far beyond the normal, or is it, do we need to go that far? But, I mean, since it is budgeting?
I think there is that potential, because it is budgeting, but I would caution that, you know, kind of like Mr. Dunlap said, and, and as Ms. Tyler said, they need the ability to move forward when the opportunity presents itself.
Right.
So, it might be appropriate for you all to make a motion tonight, stating that you're in favor of allowing that discretion, um, to get on those lists, to make those, uh, you know, strike those deals, if you will. And then, we can certainly come back with a resolution, written form, to expand the authority. We can look at what that would look like, but I would hate for us to wait another two weeks.
No, I completely agree. I just, I didn't know if we needed to get something. If we needed a resolution or something on the books to?
It certainly wouldn't be a bad idea.
Okay.
Yeah, it would, you know, it would just be another layer of just acknowledgement by the city council.
Madam Clerk, do you have suggested language that you would like to hear?
I'm ready to roll when you are.
Would you like to hear an emotion that I could simply agree to?
There you go. Well, the thing is, if I say it, then I can't write it down. But I would say something along the lines of authorizing the Director of Administration to deviate from the current procurement process in regards to these items that we've specified in order to secure contracts and necessary equipment. Okay, you got that? And I, it's on video, I hope, so we'll get it. That way, you know, certainly Renee will have the final say on those things. The department heads are gonna be the ones going through and gathering the information, getting ready, and I apologize, I need to look at you guys, too. But obviously, Renee will have the final say on that, and I think that that final authorization should go there.
So, move.
Man, that was.
The video is working, Jeremy, right? Okay, good deal.
Second.
Thank you very much.
I moved for the deviation.
Okay.
So, that, I tell you honestly, that, that kind of resolution concerns me a little bit, that's so open-ended. And I hate to, I mean, I hate to just say, no, let's not do that, but, um, it causes, I, I, it scares me a little bit to just do something like that. I mean, I would, I think I would feel better about, maybe let's authorize in that fire truck. I would like to see that fire truck, uh, authorized for 2024. And I think it, I think the rest of it is more or less, to me, it's a heads up. Things may move quicker than?
But they can go forward, they can say.
They can go forward, I think.
Exactly.
But, uh, yeah, I just.
We will adhere to whatever is said, but we just need to know that the council supports us going forward. Mr. Dunlap definitely needs to get on that list, and Mr. Boone, um, needs to have that ability to pull the trigger.
Our, our truck was approved in twenty, actually, 2022 budget, so, the truck was approved, we just have some trouble getting it.
Right.
So, if we can get on our list, you know, and get on it, uh, as, as soon as possible, then we'll know.
You have that place marker, everyone's on the same page.
Exactly, but in the meantime, if we find something on all that, that we can purchase quicker.
You've got that, right. It's not sole source, but we're at a point right now, it feels like it's a sole source.
Right, right.
People are not even getting this. They're not entertaining that.
As far as the resolution, we're just kind of talking through, it's really similar to bill number sixteen forty, right? Kind of what we're coming up to, so?
A little bit, I mean, that, that's.
Similar, yeah.
Similar, yeah.
In the same wheelhouse, kind of, yeah.
And, and, but I just think these are much larger items and.
This time, we're basically saying get on a list, we're not saying approve budget items already.
Right, and we can continue, uh, with, with Mayor Cannel, exploring what that would look like, and if it's appropriate to bring a resolution back, or if it's not. So, we'll, we'll have those internal discussions, and if it's appropriate.
I think that would be better, I, I just, I don't like having that open-ended cart wash to, uh, to approve. That scares me.
How about I modify my motion to be all of those things, for things that need to occur within, before the next city council meeting?
Sorry, Dana.
If, if there's, if, for any of the items, the transformers, the solid waste trucks, or the fire trucks, any of those items that need to be acted upon between now and the next city council meeting, I make a motion to give that discretion and approval to the Director of Administration and the department heads?
I have clarified your motion, I don't even feel it's necessary for us to amend it, so, it's clarified.
All right.
And I, just to clarify as well, Ms. Nelson, are you on, on the same page with that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One question within the discussion. Daryl, how much is a transformer?
The smaller ones, which is what we're more worried about than anything else, is about twelve hundred dollars apiece.
Okay. So, the, the later discussion that we're going to have would actually assist in some of those, that speedier purchase.
If we could get a price, that's what the price used to be.
Okay. Thank you.
And about how many do we go through a year?
Well, on the fifties, we go through, that's why we're using the subdivisions. So, if somebody opens up a new subdivision, we've got about nine right now, we usually use about six a year, the fifties, and about the same number of twenty-fives. We're checking with the school and making sure that, because they're talking about some other expansions, too, from what I understand. And if we need a large transformer, then you're, you're talking about twenty thousand dollars.
Okay.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I had a, a clarification on the fire trucks. Are we talking about leasing now, instead of purchasing, leasing to?
Yes, that, that would be a lease purchase.
Lease purchase, okay, I just wanna make sure. Instead of buying a fire, we're looking at leasing it for five years?
Yeah, that's a good thing.
We'll own it at the end.
Yes, for five.
Then you buy.
Gotcha.
All right. Motion and second on the floor, clarified that these are actions that will take place before the next city council meeting, authorizing the DOA and the appropriate department heads to move forward with getting on those lists and securing those purchases.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? All right, thank you very much, and as always, we will keep everyone informed that if any of these items come up, that's unusually out of the, out of the budget, outside the budget. Okay, next up, council concerns. Council members may discuss matters or concerns not on the agenda. Council liaisons to city boards and commissions will also provide us a brief review of the most recent meeting. First up, Councilman West is not present, he was on the P&amp;Z Commission. Is there anyone, uh, present that would like to, is, Dennis, would you like to fill us in on P&amp;Z planning and zoning, uh, meeting highlights?
Dennis Houchen's Planning Director, um, other than the rezonings that will be coming up, um, that was all that was on the agenda.
And those both did receive a recommendation for that.
Yes, yes, and, and those, uh, two rezonings are just, I'm gonna say, some housekeeping. They were, I don't know when they were zoned wrong for the use that they're being used for, so, we are changing it now, getting them the correct zoning for the use, so, which is, it's, there's multifamily buildings sitting on the property, and they were zoned, uh, single-family R1, we're going to an R3 multifamily zone.
Very good, thank you very much. Councilwoman Sebacher.
Yes, sir, I have several things. First off, a thank you to the city of Fulton and to the police department. And I don't know if any of you saw on my Facebook page, or my, I work for the Fulton Housing Authority. I had some children in one of my housing development areas that were expressive about their desire to become police officers, and I was able to reach out to the housing officers that we currently have, and they came and visited with these children, turned the lights and sirens on, gave them all little police badges, um, let me take some pictures, so, it was just a really good, feel-good moment, and I just wanted to thank the city for having the police department have that capability to, to touch the lives of our children, and our pictures, so, go out and check them out. And then the second thing was, at the last, I think it was the last council meeting, Madam Clerk, you may correct me if I'm wrong, I had brought up paint on fire hydrant perms and different things regarding sidewalks and, um, the view of those, and. and different things regarding sidewalks and the view of those, and Renee, you had mentioned that those things were coming down the pipe, they were in progress. I was just looking for an update on that, where we are in the process. Anyone? You were?
Hello. Kevin Pelfelt, Fire Chief. Now, are you talking about the curbs, or are you talking about the hydrants itself?
Yes.
Okay, as far as the hydrants, we're currently working with getting the inmates from FRDC to come and work for the city to come out, and we're wanting to paint every hydrant silver, and then we're, we color code, we put rings around the outlets to let us know what color or how much pressure and gallons per minute we can get out of the hydrants. But as far as the curbs, I'm going to have to turn that over to Streets.
Yes, the curbs should be getting painted. This is painting season right now, so it's nice and hot, it's drying quick, so the guys should be out there getting some paint on those curbs.
And we're going to look citywide for that, correct?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Perfect, thank you. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Next up, Councilwoman Rick Plouffe.
Yes, I'm the liaison for the Traffic Commission. We haven't had a meeting lately, but we are scheduling one coming up now. And of course, we all know what's going on on Second Street and everything else right now, so basically, that's kind of where we're at, our meeting schedule. Also, I would like to thank our maintenance, our trimming and mowing and taking care of our city, making it look nice with all, I'd like to thank all our workers that are out there in the heat, doing all this mowing and taking care of our city, trying to keep it looking nice. Also, I spoke with Ballard today, he's our former housing. He has surgery tomorrow on that meeting, finally.
Oh.
And everyone will think about, yeah, everybody, maybe prayers, so I'd like everyone to know that there's surgery tomorrow morning, so. And that's about it, I've got to finish.
Mr. Mayor, I have a footnote, I have a Parks and Rec meeting, park board meeting tomorrow, so hopefully by the next council meeting, I'll have something.
Okay, I was curious on that, yeah.
I think I did mention that, I apologize, but.
No, that's fine, thank you. All right, next up, Councilman Stone.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There has not been a meeting of the Historic Preservation Commission since our last update, and then the one item that a constituent brought to me was the sidewalk on, I guess it'd be Fifth Street from Bluff down going east, runs in front of 1851, the Fulton Sun.
Yeah.
It's, it's in need of some attention, in need of some repair. There's significant breakage within that sidewalk on the, on that block. So it'd be from Ravine, North Ravine to Bluff Street on Fifth Street on the north side. We'll take a look at that. That's the only item that I had, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Councilman Luther.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. There's been no Airport Advisory Board meetings since our last council meeting, but since then, I have reached out to the council with some recommended items to start the grant research for basically electrification. So the Airport Advisory Board is in need of a courtesy car, so hopefully with some of the grants that are available out there, we can satisfy both needs with one, getting an electrical, electric vehicle for the airport, as well as start the electrification project in the City of Fulton, where we can get charging stations established at certain key areas throughout the city, to kind of begin that transition into the way of the electric cars, so we should be researching grants at this time for that. Also, we're going to be working with Kyle to establish interviews with several, several of our current contractors that have placed bids for the Airport Runway Light Project, and we'll start meeting with those to see if we can't simplify that, that bid for that part.
Excellent, very good, thank you. All right, next up, Councilman Combs.
Yeah, so, yeah, the Human Rights Commission hasn't met since last time, like formally as a meeting, but a lot of work has been going into the Juneteenth celebration this weekend at Veterans Park from 12 to 4:00. It's supposed to be hot, so there's some still, some discussion around that. But outside that, that's where most of the energy's been going in terms of concerns. All I had to ask is, we just kind of keep an eye on folks and dusting again, where, kind of like Second Street, where it had been cut up for a while, and there was dust going everywhere, and the rock was getting packed down. It's gradually getting there again on that road since it's traveled heavily. I don't think it's terrible, but I'm sure some of those neighbors would start to complain about that dust.
Very good, we can take a look at that this week, probably. All right, thank you very much. Councilman Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, just maybe a couple of things, but I've been making trips to Trin's, just to Trin's, the resale store down here. I've been noticing a lot of, it's looked like it's going to be the dumping ground for a lot of, a lot of, what'd you say, yard sales, and people, if they don't sell anything, and they, they seem to be getting overwhelmed, and a trash bin has been filled, they have to fill up a lot of stuff that can use. They hate to tell, people know, don't bring it because, you know, then people are like, why are you here, you know, if we can't bring these things? But somehow, we need to assist them and, and, because there are dump fees for, I'm not sure what their dump fees are, they have to dump them pretty regular. How often do you, Robert, how do they?
I don't know, it seems like every, every other day, they have to, they fill up these dumpsters, and if you get a chance to ever go in there, it's just, they are just really overwhelmed, and they're doing a terrific job trying it, and they get, it's a lot of business, a lot of the, I see a lot of people traveling, going there to and fro, and, but I went in the back room, went just to see what they're doing, and, and it's, it's really
overwhelming, so, and they said this, they've been used as like a dump, like a dumping ground for yard sales. And so I think if we can assist somehow and alleviate or help out on some of those dumping fees or something like that, it's just something that we need to look into.
Mr. Mayor, if I may add to that, I serve on the board for SERV, and I, it's, I believe we have that dumpster tipped every day, I think, just for situations like that, if not every day, then every other. But the, one of the main problems that I think Trin's has is folks coming after hours and leaving their items, and then they're out in the weather, they're exposed to animals, people sort of pillaging them, if you will, and then those items become unusable. We can't turn around and place those in the store for resale. So I love that you're watching that, I love the suggestion for the city to help in some way. I would most likely abstain from anything that comes from that, but if there is anything that we can do, if there's dumpster fee discounts or additional tips, you know, during the day, not to add pressure or burden to the City Solid Waste Department, but I love the idea of helping them.
It seemed to be a benefit for the people that have yard sales, knowing that, hey, I could just take this, so somewhere, we.
And, and Trin's provides a phenomenal service to this community.
Exactly.
And SERV overall provides that same service, so I appreciate that. That's my question.
Yeah, and Mr. Mayor, also, I volunteered there for a while, and it is true, what's happening, and if we can't assist them somehow, it is, it's enormous, enormous place, people are using it, it needs to be done.
Possibly.
Thank you.
What about having our Police Department make a, make that one of their routine stops in, in the evening time to curb, try to curb some of that dumping.
Kind of check out.
Job, and just using it as a trash can, you know, we, maybe we could.
You have worked on it.
So you're not supposed to drop off after hours, right?
Absolutely not.
You're not supposed to.
Not after hours.
And there's very little that SERV can provide to prevent that. I think right now, it's, it consists of tying off the parking lot to try to keep vehicles from coming in, but that doesn't stop them from parking on the side of the road and just walking.
Dumping all over.
So it's, it's pretty difficult to monitor that.
Don't, don't get me, it's not so much people going into their dumpster dumping stuff in, it's they just bring it into SERV, bring it into Trin's, and, and they, and Trin's like, man, there's much we can do with this.
And it's just a dump?
Yeah.
Bill Ludwig, Chief of Police. I've been in contact with Courtney Harrison a couple of times the last week, week and a half. They've been having an issue with unhoused people tearing down the fence behind the building, setting up and just dumping a bunch of trash, so people will get into the dumpsters themselves, leave things. So we can actually step up our, our patrols through there and do what we call a watch and passing. I know they've been checking behind the building and checking that fence line for them, because that was a big concern that they had going on here right now, but we do try to keep a, a close eye on that, that people will sneak in and just, you know, even though there's signs that say, don't, don't leave things after hours, they still do.
Would there be any way that we could have that dumpster tipped at the end of the day, so there's nothing that's left in there after 5:00 or any of the city thing? I, I don't know what time it comes, I know for, for my work, it comes very early in the morning, but.
I would say, I mean, end of the day, what else does it usually about?
Two, two, three o'clock, yeah.
I don't know what time Trin's calls it, so.
I think they're open until 5:00 or 6:00.
Maybe some things we can do, we can certainly think about it, we can talk to, talk to All right, anything else? All right, Councilman, or Councilwoman Nelson, sorry.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. No updates on Utility Ward, we haven't met again since the last council meeting, and we do have one coming up, though, so next, next meeting, I'll have an update. I, I will say that I manage a business that is on the Second Street project, and Kyle actually stopped by today, which I really appreciate. I think that the city's trying really hard to be in contact with the businesses along that area, and I, I really, really appreciate you stopping by. We've definitely noticed every single time that it's impacted our business, there's been somebody that's come in, that's communicated, so I really, really appreciate that from the city. You know, it's been nice to have some communication, we know that it's going to impact our business, but honestly, we've had people that are really excited about the project, so it's really nice to see. And then I did have a citizen reach out to me, and I know, I, we've emailed back and forth regarding parking, I believe on Arrow Street, and I wanted to make sure that we were going to address the parking on the streets as a whole. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, perfect.
That is correct.
And that's, that's the only things I had.
Very good, thank you for bringing that to our attention, and kudos to our, our hard-working folks on Second Street. That's a big, big project for an identity. Okay, moving on to resolutions. Our first one tonight, if you would, Councilman Stone, Resolution Number 3450.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 3450, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Missouri Petroleum Products Company, LLC of St. Louis, Missouri, for the purpose of providing aggregate seal coat services. I make a motion to pass Resolution 3450 at tonight's council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, and if you would, Mr. Brummer, kind of just give us a rundown of.
Yes, Kyle Brimmer, City Engineer. Yes, Missouri Petroleum is the company who won the chip seal bid this year. This is a bid that we cooperatively do with Boone County, Callaway County, Mexi, City of Mexico, and, and ourselves, so it's a conglomeration to try to get a better price. And we have a number of roads that, that this touches. I believe I listed those in your packet, from Apache, Perry, Bradley, St. Eunice, Industrial, Forest, Sioux, East Morningside, Ray, Lynn, Donna, Mohawk, Chippewa, St. Louis, Grand Street, Rice Road, and Seventh Street. So quite a number of streets that this touches, and, you know, the, the ability to try to preserve these streets. These streets that get a chip seal aren't necessarily the worst streets in town, there are streets that are, are getting older, that we're trying to save and elongate their life, so we're not, we're not having to, to spin and buck up and, and really spend a lot of money on, on overlays every year, so, any questions?
What time of year do we think that's going to happen? Do we have any idea?
I think it's, I think it is going to happen pretty quickly, yes, I think it'll be July, but I know Missouri Patrol is gearing up, and it kind of depends on where we get on their schedule, or how they orient their work between those entities. They also, I believe they won the contract also for Cole County, so they mobilized kind of in the, the central region, and it just kind of depends on how they put their schedule together. But I'll reach out to them again and see if they've got a refined schedule to give you a better idea.
I just think the citizens that this affects would like to know, get a heads up for what that process looks like.
And beforehand, beforehand, we'll put signs out and whatnot leading up to it, so they'll, they'll have an idea when it, when it is quickly coming, but, yes, we'd, we'd like to get something out there prior.
Very good. All right. Any other discussion? Motion in a second. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? And next up, we have Resolution 3451, and Kyle, you may as well stay there, so, if you would, Councilman Luther.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 3451, a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to a contract with Christiansen Construction Company of Kingdome City, Missouri, for the 2022 asphalt overlay project. Make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 3451, this council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Again, if you would just give us a quick highlight there.
Yes, again, Kyle Brimmer, City Engineer. Asphalt overlay project this year, it includes Second Street, of course, but Wood Street is, is one of the major roads that, that it's touching, and we've got Tennyson Road as well, State Street, and Evergreen, so not a long list, not nearly as long as that chip seal list, because it costs a lot more, so, and, and of course, with the rising cost of petroleum, anything petroleum-based is, is increased this year, so, you know, with this, with this bid, we had, we had two bidders, Christiansen Construction and Mo Seal, and Christiansen, Christiansen Construction won the bid. Per our estimate, we're, we're a little bit over what we have budgeted, we're about $62,000 over what we have budgeted with the, with those streets that, that, that I listed, so, you know, I do have a, a plan to attack that if we do not wish to go over budget. Any questions, comments?
I'm interested in your plan to attack that.
So on our, on our list, we have Westminster and Seventh, the intersection of Westminster and Seventh, and, you know, it, it would pain me to take the, take that intersection out, just because I know that it is very well-traveled, especially with the Churchill Museum right there, but that's about, there's about $30,000 right there, and there is, for Skygo parking lot, that's a parking lot by the library, there's $40,000 in our budget for, for the approaches, and I don't know if, if you're driving on Business 54 and you're turning, turning in there, there, there are some steep approaches to the library, and that has been in our budget in years past, and we've had to pull it for other reasons. I think that's, that, that's something that we could look at taking out. So between, between those two, that's about $70,000, which is in excess of that 60.
Can you give us that number one more time? What was the over-budget amount, 62?
Right about 62.
And with the price of fuel, that's not as bad as I kind of expected it to be.
I'm actually excited that we got two bids.
Yeah.
Right.
It's pretty hard to get that nowadays.
Yeah, and they were really pretty close, so that's a, that's a good thing.
Kyle, I do have another question, and you'll have to just educate me. I'm assuming that chip seal and overlay are two separate budget line items?
Yes, there is two separate, two separate line items, we do kind of blur them together, together sometimes, because we're just trying to look at kind of the best mix to, for trying to look at kind of the best mix to, uh, for, for the roads in general, so.
I was just curious if there'd be any interest in reexamining the chip seal project to kind of help navigate some of that money towards the overlay project if those items, especially the Skygo parking lot, if it's been something that's been delayed for several years. I don't want to just keep picking that can down the road, so.
And we did tweak the chip seal list, and we, we squelched that down, if you will, because we had the same issue, uh, with the chip seal, is it, it, higher cost than, than what it's... So we, we've kind of already done that, and I just didn't, we, we had them ordered from kind of prior, and from top to bottom, and we just took, took those off, so.
Yeah, we're explaining that.
The Westminster and Seventh intersection, if we did that, would that catch the, the section that we had to cut across for the stormwater? Would that catch that?
Actually, actually, we have, we have a, another ingredient in our recipe on the roads, and that's, we have a microsurface bid out right now. Um, and so that will be coming to us. What we, what we estimate on the microsurface is about a, about a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars, so that's, that's another piece of the puzzle. And, uh, we were proposing to, um, microsurface that section of roadway, and, uh, it would, it would touch that patch as well. So we were hoping...
I had driven, I just assumed that that probably wasn't quite perfect.
Right. We were hoping to, to try to get that intersection and then all the, and then microsurface kind of down to that bridge. And the microsurface is a, is very, is a, gives a similar result to a chip seal, but it is not, don't think of it as a chip seal, okay? It's a, it's, it looks, it looks more, um, like an asphalt overlay. Once it's, once it's done, it just does not give you any kind of a structural, uh, component that, that an asphalt overlay would do. So again, it's touching roads that are in, uh, that are in pretty good shape. They're structurally really good shape, so.
And that's in the middle of the chip seal and the overlay? Like, price-wise?
Correct.
Okay.
That's, uh, that's more toward the chip seal, but, uh, more, more expensive than the chip seal.
Okay.
Kyle, your Tennyson description, it says Route C to EOP. What's EOP's name?
Um, the end of pavement.
So doing all of Tennyson?
Yeah, for, well, it would be from, yeah, kind of Route C, pass to, uh, South Winds subdivision, right there.
Okay.
And it turns to gravel right there, just after that, that second entrance, or that third entrance, I guess, now.
So we have, uh, we have a choice here, folks. Do we want to move forward with the proposed four-seventy, or do we want to have Kyle cut some of that?
Can we cut part of it? Can we cut part of it? Like, keep, keep, I don't even know. I, I, I'm kind of like with you, Valerie. We've pulled it off so many times on the parking lot, but at the same time, it seems like it's working.
It's functioning.
And it's a larger chunk of money, but it seems like that the intersection is really traveled.
Right.
You know, by people not just in our community, but people coming to visit. It's tough.
Can our budget absorb the full amount? I mean, if we, if our budget can currently absorb the full cost of it, I'd say proceed with the full bill.
Did you have any insight as to whether or not that number is exact? Is that a static number, or will there be some flexibility?
Well, there's, you know, it's, it's construction and it's, uh, so I'm not, I'm definitely not gonna say that that's a static number. You know, at four-seventy, um, you know, Second Street, for example, we'll just pull the street if there's, if, uh, if they mill a portion of that and the base is really bad, there may be a little bit more involved, so.
I think I'd be more frightened than that, like Nora, if, you know, if they bid four-seventy, it's no different than doing home remodels or things of that nature. You never know what you're gonna find until you get into it. And if we're already expected to be about sixty-two thousand over budget, who knows how that number could grow? So you have a little hesitancy about that. I think I would feel more comfortable pulling items off to get us under budget in the event that the price does increase, um, so that we're not that much further over the budget hit amount. Uh, and then maybe have the option to add these cut items back in later, if that's a possibility. I don't know what the council thinks.
Kyle, what's, what's the flexibility with the contractor on this? I mean, is it...
I can talk to, to, uh, Tom or Mitchell, Christiansen, and, and see, but normally, they've been, uh, pretty flexible. Um, but it is, you know, the climate is what it is right now. You know, it's difficult, and there is a, you know, another, another caveat to this is that, you know, if asphalt prices, prices rise, uh, normally how we bid, how asphalt is bid across the state is there is a, uh, there's an index, you know? So it allows them to bid and not get, get really crushed on a bid because all of a sudden the price jumped on them. So, you know, with, with the climate the way it is, um, I think a conservative approach is wise.
Also, with respect to, this is maintenance of our streets, maintenance and repair.
Absolutely.
Cost of the project.
And I'm not opposed to the project, I'm just worried for our budget.
I understand that, but I'm just saying, folks, as far as infrastructure is concerned...
Yes.
Um, the only thing I will say to the council is be very careful with being paid wise and sound for which the costs do not, even if we were in a better climate, because the, the repairs become more state growth.
Same as the fire truck situation.
So it does not, it, it, we can have a great economy and everything can be great, but it still is going to cost us to maintain and keep our roads, so please bear that in mind. Thank you.
Also, hasn't there been discussion of federal money for infrastructure? Has that been fully vetted and are we able to get any of that? Has that been talked about, looked at, calculated into our current budget, you know, the available funds out there?
We've definitely talked about it a lot, the ability to calculate it, you know, into our budget. That's, you know, we've, we've, we're not, we're not banking on stuff.
Delay, it delays the project, so we, so that doesn't, also, you also stand, run the risk strongly of an increase in the cost to do the project. So there's a lot of variables, but, you know, bear in mind, our streets are imperative for our people to maintain service levels, for you all to drive, for citizens to get around. Um, they are important. They are important.
So Valerie, we also have a budget that we gotta stand by as well.
I, I understand that, but you know what? I'm not being disrespectful. There are certain things, we start talking balancing budgets, and then you start having sinkholes and such, budgets go out the window. So I'm just pointing out a holistic understanding of when we're talking about skimming back on streets and roadways and even public, uh, what he's like, what our engineering department has laid out is, you know, a, a plan to maintain, and so...
Yes.
That, that's the only thing, that, that is our job, is to present you all with the best options possible to keep the city in the best shape as possible in a timely manner.
Can I ask another question regarding the parking lot? Can you give us a little bit more insight on that? Because I definitely agree that this intersection is important, just like you're saying, you know, that's something that's traveled all the time. Tell us a little bit more about the parking lot and, where is it? Like, the library parking lot? Is that what we're talking about?
It's, it's the library parking lot. It's, it's really...
Before you go in.
Right.
It's a library parking lot, and the city owns a portion of that parking lot. So, um, if you drive up, uh, from the business route and you take the inclined driveways, basically, and, and to, you know, the approaches into the library, we own kind of the, the immediate parking lot there. There used to be some, there used to be some parking meters there. And, uh, so to me, pulling that parking lot, um, is, is a lot easier than it would be the intersection. Those, the approaches, though they're, um, you know, though they're steep and, uh, they, they function, you know? It's more, it's more...
And they've been that way for how many years?
Right. I mean, it, it's been that way for a long time. I'm not receiving a bunch of calls.
Right. Yeah, there you go.
We can start there. I don't, I don't know if Mary wants, I'm, I'm fifty-three, and they've been there my whole life, you know?
And they're concrete.
There's a cute little photo booth, uh, film developing.
And they're concrete, and not every, I mean, there is a lot of traffic that goes right through, especially you've got, uh, the, the cities, one of the city's main attractions right there, if not the main attraction, so. Uh, there's a lot of traffic on, on Westminster Avenue. Uh, I'm not saying that I, that I, I would love to, to have them both in there, but...
Of course.
If I were to pull one, um, the forty thousand dollars for a parking lot entrance and a little tiny bit of parking lot, uh, seems to be pretty easy.
That puts us, I mean, that puts us twenty-two thousand over, which is less than a five percent difference, which is, we'd absorb that no matter what, so.
And it also gives a little bit of leeway there for overage on cost if the project goes up. But I think that the intersection's important.
And Bob, did you have something to say? I thought I heard you were getting ready to say something.
When the discussion's finished, I was just gonna, I was gonna say I'll make a, make a motion to accept thirty-four fifty-one, the resolution, but we still discuss it.
We do already have the motion on the floor.
Yeah.
And I'll second.
So, yep, cool. We do have that motion in a second. Um, it could be amended to pull the, uh, pull the parking lot if you so choose to do that.
And that is, uh, Mayor, that the parking lot is a separate line item in our budget, so that is something that could be, you know, I don't know, the, the, you know, Ms. Tyler could choose just to say, hey, we're not, we're not doing that, you know, so.
So we necessarily even have to amend?
Correct.
Okay.
Could you keep us sort of updated on the progress and where we are with regards to that bid, um, as the project kind of moves forward?
Of course.
I know we won't have an exact number until the end, but just, you know, we're eighty-five percent, we're sixty-five percent, just something like that. I just, I'd be curious to see how that progresses.
Okay.
Thank you.
Kyle, I'm gonna ask my question again about flexibility. I guess where my mind was going was, what do you think the response is gonna be from the contractor if we remove that item? I mean, that, it...
Could it, could it affect, could it affect the bid because of quantity?
It could, it, it could affect the bid more than just the, the dollar amount that's written on there. I mean, if, if we're changing the bid, then he may say, well, you know, then I have to put in, I'm still gonna have this much labor, I'm still gonna have this much product.
It would be a change order to the contract that he would have to, uh, hopefully give us a, no, no per ton increase type of thing, you know?
I guess, I'd, I'd be interested to hear...
It would be a little, little bit...
A response that would be more than just the forty thousand.
Right.
Because it, we may, it may end up costing us more to remove the item than it would to leave it in, if where my mind's going.
I'd like to know that, too.
Very good. So potentially, that all said, does that seem reasonable to everyone?
Thank you for your hard work. You know, it's hard to get out there with these bids, and so I appreciate you.
Again, I'm just glad, I'm glad we at least got two.
Yeah.
Good start for the guys doing the asphalt. It's hot. It's a hot job. Yes, ma'am.
Now, wait, how much, we cut last year's budget, why did they do that? Two, three, nine, a rose.
Oh, yes.
Over four thousand.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
We're definitely more in line this, this, uh, year.
Okay, so just to clarify, we do have a motion and a second on the table, um, for consideration to move this resolution forward as it is written.
With the understanding that the parking lot will be cut at some point. All right. Any other discussion?
I don't think that, I don't think that was what was being said. Now, I said that, that was on a separate, if I was remembering what he said, if that's on a separate thing, and every name could, if she chooses, could do, uh, yeah, I believe that's what it was saying.
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Correct. The motion did not include cutting anything from this four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand-nine-ninety-two-forty.
That's right.
But it gave Renee the discretion, obviously, it's, it's a separate line item. So there is that potential that it may not be included, and the council will be informed of that.
We could change the resolution, amend it to include that right now. That way, it's a done deal, Renee doesn't have to decide.
Can, can we make a, uh, an amendment to see what the bid would look like if we did cut it? So we know, because I'm like Jeff, I don't want to pay an extra twenty thousand dollars if we do decide to cut it, whenever we should have just kept it in there, and can we amend it that way?
So what would it be?
So the parking lot is not part of this bid.
Okay.
It's a separate, it's a total separate line item.
Okay, okay.
It was not, so, so we wouldn't be able to find that out.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
So we're not removing it from the bid, we're removing it from the budget.
Okay.
Okay.
So this project remains the same dollar amount, but you may, you're gonna save money elsewhere in the budget.
Correct, correct. There's, uh, yes, there's a, there's a line out, I'm sorry, I didn't, sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
Is Seventh and Westminster included in this?
Seventh and Westminster is in this.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
If I remember right...
So then the resolution stands as it's written.
Yeah. Because if I, if I remember right, Valerie asked, uh, what are those other options? Uh, and that's what he was alluding to at the time. So that's what I was understanding.
Yeah. So, yeah, I think, I think everybody else understands.
Everybody's clear as mud. Thank you, Kyle.
All right. And, and we'll definitely send something out to the council when that, when we get that verification on that from Christiansen. All right. Any other discussion? All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
And opposed, no? All right. Thank you very much. Next up, ordinances. Uh, we do have a couple tonight, uh, four, five tonight. So first up, bill number sixteen thirty-nine, if you would present this, Councilman Coats.
Bill number sixteen thirty-nine, an ordinance of the City of Fulton, Missouri, authorizing the city to participate in the Missouri Firefighters Critical Illness Trust and Pool, and further authorizing the mayor to execute documents as may be necessary for the city's participation there. And I make a motion to place number bill, or bill number sixteen thirty-nine for second reading at the next regularly scheduled council meeting.
Second. We have a motion and a second. And Renee, if you would just fill us in on this?
Yes. So, good evening. I would like to invite Mr. Matthew Brodesson, who is the Executive Director of MyRMA Health, to come to the podium.
Good evening, everybody. I was really just prepared to answer questions, but I could tell you a little bit about the program if you'd like to hear it. This program is newly formed. It was, uh, gained legislative approval in the prior session, the twenty-twenty-one session, and it took them a, a few months to get it put together, and it has been launched. Uh, they've got about eighteen departments that are participating right now. Uh, MyRMA Health developed the program and is in favor of our member cities participating in the program. And to provide an encouragement for that, we are reimbursing our cities that participate, uh, seventy-five percent of their cost the first year, sixty-five the second year, and fifty percent year three and every year thereafter. Uh, what the program does, it provides an immediate payment to eligible participating firefighters, uh, who have a diagnosis of one of seventeen cancers. Uh, they get that payment, uh, based on the severity of the cancer and the stage that they're in. Uh, it ranges from approximately a few thousand dollars to about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand is the payment that they receive. Uh, it doesn't require them to prove where the cancer came from. Uh, the reason that MyRMA is supporting it, uh, there was a push by some of the fire unions to try and get firefighter cancer to be presumed to have caused from employment, therefore being presumed to be, um, if it's presumed to be caused by employment, it would fall within workers' compensation, and the responsibility would fall to the employer to prove that it did not come from there. The cost associated with doing that would be tremendous. I'd estimate it about seventeen hundred dollars per year per firefighter, uh, where the cost of this program is about three hundred dollars per year for a firefighter. Uh, this program has been implemented in other states and been very successful. This program has been implemented in other states and been very successful. It works better for the firefighters because they do get an immediate benefit without having to go through a prolonged legal battle. It's better for the employers because it keeps the costs in check. I mentioned three hundred dollars per year. The information that's before you is probably a hundred and eighteen dollars. The difference in that is the State Fire Marshal's Office gave that pool about five million dollars that did their initial capitalization, and also provided incentive in the amount of reduced fees for the first few years. That's the quick spiel. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have it.
So I just wanted to throw something else in. Additionally, Mirma is in twenty twenty-three going to make an assessment in the amount of two hundred percent of the current firefighter cancer pool fee per firefighter. So at this time, are, are embracing this opportunity as something that will assist our firefighters in the event, you know, they are diagnosed with a cancer. It not only is a benefit that is proactive for them, but it also, in the long run, helps us because if we don't act now, we will be fined later by Mirma. But more importantly, it's a great benefit for our firefighters. For the first year, the financial impact is less than eight hundred dollars. That's for everybody.
Wonderful.
So, it is, it, it is something that we can afford. We can absolutely afford to do.
For sure. And Chief, do you have something to add?
I was just here to answer any questions as well.
Gotcha.
This covers everyone under the umbrella of the Fire Department. It's not specific to just.
You have, it, it covers your entire staff, but you have to have five years of service to be eligible.
Okay. I think it's a great idea. That part's a big benefit.
We currently have nineteen full-time firefighters and two volunteers that would qualify.
Are we fully staffed in the Fire Department?
We are fully staffed.
Yeah.
That's wonderful. How many, would you just estimate that are less than that five-year requirement?
Five. Five firefighters, and a couple of those are just a year or two short.
Okay. So in a couple of years, we're looking at everybody being covered by the side of benefits. I love that.
I hope so.
Thank you so much for bringing this up.
Seems like a no-brainer. Any other discussion on this? All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for coming.
If, if it would suit the council, can we take five minutes? We're gonna have quite a bit more going here. We got an executive session lined up, too. We'll take a brief break and be right back. We'll jump right back in here. We were.
Bill sixteen forty.
Okay, yeah. Bill sixteen forty, if you would, Councilman Washington.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bill, Bill number sixteen forty, an ordinance repealing section two dash three sixty-two competitive bidding, section nine Fulton City Code, and enacting a new legislation in lieu of, and lieu thereafter. I'm making a motion that we move sixteen, bill number sixteen forty to the next scheduled, for second reading, next scheduled meeting.
So, can?
I have a motion and a second, and if you would, Renee, just tell us what's going on. I know what's going on.
All right, so this basically is addressing purchasing limits that I, I sign off on. Right now, on any given day, over, about three hundred purchase orders are sitting in my box in the encode for me to sign off on. The problem with that is some of them are for as little as a hundred dollars. Which frankly, I, we already have a process, our finance director looks for things. But what I am proposing is that you allow us to raise the limit on what I actually have to sign off on. It is all being reviewed, and the proposed limits are items up to four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents are approved by the department head. Purchases within the range of five hundred dollars to four hu, four thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-nine cents would be the department head and the chief financial officer. Purchases within the range of five thousand to nine thousand nine hundred and ninety dollars, nine dollars and ninety-nine cents will be approved by the department head, the chief financial officer, and the assistant director of administration. Anything over ten thousand dollars will be, then come to me for approval. Otherwise, I'm seeing everything, even after it has gone through a department head review and the chief financial officer's review. That is basically the gist of it. And bearing in mind that in today's climate, the majority of what we purchase is over ten thousand dollars. So I, I really don't need to sign off on wings of paper, the retirement parties. I mean, these are things that have come to me. You know, we are, I, I, everyone is very in tune, and we have a very responsible group of leaders in our organization. There is really no reason that I should not depend upon senior staff to make certain that these lower level, these lower purchases are not so.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I'd like to just add a little information on, not information, but anyway, just say, from my experience of being on the Housing Commissioner, for the Housing, for the Housing, for several, several years. We used to allow, we used to have to go through that bidding process like she was talking about, the little things. Got to the point where we almost had to approve everything of them, and that just, we allowed the, allowed the executive director, you know, at a certain amount, you know, we didn't have to go through the bidding process, just allow her to have that discretion, to have that discretion, go ahead and just buy, purchase, whatever, without coming through us. We found it very, you know, we thought it was, that was a great idea, and I'm not sure if that's going on now. And I think Valerie can probably explain it better than I could.
Similar situation, yeah, similar situation, and.
Yeah, so I think that, I like the idea, you exactly, that would tie, that would loose, free you up to be able to do some other things and focus on things more important than just a hundred dollar item.
And obviously, the concern is misappropriation of them.
Yes.
But the policy we have is a little antiquated, and honestly, people are needing things approved faster than Renee can even have time to do it. And it's, it's a timeliness thing more than anything.
Yeah.
We want her doing bigger things.
I think we got a great, great supervisor. We got, we got, we've just got great heads in the department. We got some good people working for the City of Fulton, and I compliment you guys for your hard work and time that you put in. Great job. Awesome. And I have trust and faith in what they do and the decisions they did make. I think they have the city's best interests at heart. Thank you for sharing that.
Mr. Mayor, Ms. Tyler and Madam Clerk, I guess I do have a question. The proposed language is simply a change in the, the signature authority on the purchase order. We're really not talking about changing bid levels and what has to go out for competitive bid.
Correct.
Right.
All we're really talking about is who, whose signature will reside on the, the purchase order. We may still have to bid a twenty-five hundred dollar piece of equipment. Okay, I just, I wanted to clarify.
Yes.
That we're not, we're not changing our competitive bidding process.
No.
We're changing whose signature will end up on the purchase order.
That's a very good point. It, it is a little confusing because it falls, it falls under competitive bidding. But I will tell you, after we had a staff meeting the other day, we're gonna look at some of those things as well. Specifically, what we're talking about is that purchase order authorization.
Thank you very much.
Of reviewing purchases.
Very good.
Will there be any sort of audits, like twice a year, just to make sure that everything is kosher? Or are we going?
We are. Sure to be audited about every two minutes.
We are audited.
About every two minutes, it's gonna be audited.
But I'm talking about like whenever it's just about the department head, you know. Five hundred dollars doesn't sound like a lot of money, but three, four, five hundred, five dollar purchases, you know, could add up over time.
Of course.
So I just was concerned about that, that specifically.
So it does, come on, Ted. Here we go.
And I agree with what Bob is saying, too. I think we have great department heads. It's just checks and balances.
In addition to.
In addition to the approval process and the approval pass for requisitions, every check register that goes out from the city, I review at length. It shows the account number it's charged to. And I look for anything that is questionable. I think that's my job.
It's also reviewed by you and your staff, but before it gets into the process.
Before it ever gets into the system.
Their hands are placed on this.
Yeah. There's lots of checks.
It just doesn't appear at my desk.
There are already checks and balances.
There are already checks and balances. The only thing is, and this has happened, the only thing is that there are instances, I am traveling, I am not in the office, I am outside, I'm going to meetings, I'm wherever I'm supposed to be. There are several, have been several instances where I'm getting phone calls, I'm getting, "I need you to approve this." I can't approve it, I'm not there.
Right.
Then, I come in, it's 300, I'm not exaggerating, 315 purchase orders, and over 100 of them are less than $200.
I definitely think your time is better spent than signing off on 100s of paper.
And in reality, could you do an effective job of vetting any of that with that sheer quantity, anyway?
No.
So, you can't.
No.
It's almost a non-issue.
No.
To Darryl's question, he mentioned early on, when he said that it's hard to get bids for certain things. It's hard to get competitive bids to bring in, hey, getting somebody to bid on something. But, you know, especially things at $1,200, you know, talking about a transformer, a small one, or something like that. So, the idea of having that supervisor, like you said, just being able to, I see we have them two different things, question about signatures as well as bidding. But I think we got to look at, for us, a threshold of what the limit should be when you look to go get a competitive bid for this, and just trusting your department to make the best buy, instead of just going to a bid.
And I would like to add that, and Mr. Dunlop as a great example, they come and they, they're discussing these things as things develop. Even with the transformer, it's, he's still talking about it, he keeps, I've been kept in the loop, I've been kept in the loop, whether it's the trash truck, whether it's the bids, even when we're putting the bids together, you know. We are working as a team, no one's just up and doing on their own. There is a discussion, there is, I put input in on, you know, the final, you know, asking questions. A couple of instances, reviewing, well, when we did get a couple bids, just, you know, looking at them, with them, and talking about it. So, it isn't, no one, none of our staff, our senior staff are operating autonomously, they're all, we're working together. So, in this instance, and with Kathy, there is, there is not, there is not a lot of room for somebody to misappropriate funds. And these are not, these people are not those type of people. They are very serious and they sincerely regale what they do. They are proud service, so we don't...
I hear you saying, "We have awesome staff."
We have awesome staff with a high level integrity, yes.
There's the word, no Michael man.
Yes, they have integrity, so...
I see how the wording will help and give some more ownership to our department heads and others, but to mention all these purchase orders of $200, $300, but look at the previous language, it doesn't appear that they needed your signature in the first place, so is there a process we need to look at? It looks like previously it was $1,000, right?
Well, I thought that, too, until those little bitty ones kept showing up.
So, is there communication, possibly, to our folks, our department heads?
Well, some of it was the fact, because I am, I was, as far as administrative is concerned, I was also the administrative department head in admin, so those things were coming to me. So, we amended that. Mr. Boone is now that designated, but this just actually makes it more specific, you know. And if there is something that I have a question about, because I also have the ability to go back and look at whatever I want to, spot checking or just asking, I can still see.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion on this? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no.
Yes.
Very good. All right, next up, Councilwoman Nelson, if you would present Bill 1641.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Bill number 1641, an ordinance authorizing amendments to the city of Fulton budget for the fiscal year of 2021, as outlined by Article 8, Financial Procedures, Section 8.8, Amendments After Adoption, Paragraph C, Transfer of Appropriations, Fulton City Charter, and Establishing an Effective Date. I make a motion, we place Bill number 1641 for second reading at next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and Ms. Holschlag, if you would.
I've included a couple exhibits with your packet and the justification. The departments that were over budget totaled $4.9 million. The departments under budget were at $4.5 million. The biggest factor in the $4.9 million over budget is that $3.5 million that was over in the gas department due to the freeze in Texas last February. Some of the bigger overages, fire and police, they were both over on personnel and overtime costs. But in addition, they, each department bought radios, was offset by grant money. But it still makes them over budget because the grant money obviously hits the revenue side. Parks and Rec was over, and the airport was over mainly because we had some hangars that ran over into 2021, construction of new hangars at the airport. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. And I will remind you that adjustments are done, not on individual, I always feel like a broken record when I say this, not on individual line items, but on the bottom line. So, if a department is over on one line item, they can tighten their belt and still come in under budget.
Kathy, you mentioned that the grant money that came in to offset some of the cost of the radios went into revenue versus what?
These are adjustments to expenses.
So, that money goes to revenue, general revenue, and not back to the department?
For each particular department. There are revenue lines in the general fund, police grant revenue, fire department grant revenue, et cetera. That's how you're required to report it.
So theoretically, would that have had any impact on the amount that they were over budget?
No, because it's, we only adjust the expenses.
Okay.
True.
So, they're actually...
They may have also been over budget on the revenue, too. But the only thing that, it's an audit.
May more than cover some of these overages. But I still have to adjust the expenses.
Understood, thank you, Kathy.
And this is something we do every year.
Yes.
Department head or proper caper.
Yes. We do this prior to the issuance of the comprehensive annual financial statement. And we wait to make sure that there's no audit adjustments that pop up at the last minute.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions or discussion? I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, thank you very much. Next up, Councilwoman West is not here. Councilwoman Sabak, would you do the honor of presenting Bill 1642?
You couldn't have called me earlier and asked?
I'm sorry. You're the next woman out.
Okay. Bill number 1642, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning code, tracts of land located at 2 Arrow Street and 1302 Coatsendessen Road in Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I'll make a motion to place Bill number 1642 for second reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
Okay, we did have a public hearing on this tonight, and I would make note that in our meeting minutes, there was, if, Dennis, would you mind coming up and tell us? We had some guests there at the planning and zoning meeting that were opposed to this, is that right?
Yeah, Dennis Howson, Planning Director. We had some guests there at the P&amp;Z, but they were there regarding the parking issues. And this change will not affect the parking issues. That was, that's a different issue. This won't, there's plenty of parking for these, on these properties, it was just a different parking issue.
Okay. Any, okay, and yeah, just the way the meeting minutes were written, it just seemed like that was part of this situation.
Yeah, and it's a different...
Kind of wasn't, really, that they talked about.
They were there, but for a different reason.
All three of these properties have off-street parking. And we're going to be talking about that some more.
All right, and the recommendation was from P&amp;Z to approve this request, and we did discuss it earlier. We did get a citizen in favor of that tonight. Any other discussion on this or questions? All right, I'll call for the question. All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. All right, that will be advanced. Next up, Councilwoman Sabak, there you go.
Here we go.
Bill 1643.
Yes, sir. Bill number 1643, an ordinance reclassifying under the zoning code, a tract of land located at 1300 Coatsendessen Road in Fulton, Missouri, and establishing an effective date. I'll make a motion to place Bill number 1643 for second reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Again, we had a public hearing tonight on this request. We had a citizen come forward in favor of that. And again, the P&amp;Z board did approve this, make a motion to approve it. Is there any discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no. That would be advanced to second reading. Next up, we do our second reads at this time. Councilwoman Requel, if you would present Bill number 1638.
Yes, I'd like to do third reading also tonight. That would be okay, Mr. Mayor?
Absolutely.
Okay. Bill number 1638, an ordinance amending Section 94-112, storage and placement of waste in waste containers, Fulton City Code, by enacting an additional legislation regarding residential waste containers, placement, and establishing effective date. I make a motion for Bill number 1638 to, for third reading at tonight's meeting.
Ma'am, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second, thank you for that. So, we talked about this at our last meeting. Tonight, we had a concerned citizen come to us and address the council.
Also have some question on this one, but where are these times? I don't have these times.
So, I'm asking Mr. Boone to come up, because I, I'm a little, I don't know where the times that the citizen missed.
I personally can't meet the 8:00 time either, so I have concern that that's...
Robert Boone, Assistant Director of Administration, that is news to me as well. My understanding is that the current ordinance said that you had to have your trash can out. You couldn't have it out 24 hours before you had to get your trash picked up. So, sending it out the night before would be fine, sending it out two days before that would be in violation of that ordinance. But because some people thought that that wasn't very clear, we thought that we would have this ordinance put in place to say that not only do you can't send it out more than 24 hours ahead of time, that once you send it out and it's been tipped, that you need to remove it back to your home, or at least close to your home residence, within 24 hours after it's been tipped. So, you know, some people, you're right, are going to be on vacation, some people work different shifts. But we thought that that 24 hour would at least give you some clarification, that you can't just sit out there all week.
24 hours before it's picked up, it can be out there, and the 24 hours after it's tipped.
At least be picked up. Correct.
And as I was saying, we had a citizen bring this concern to us, that certain neighborhoods have different needs. In her neighborhood, for instance, the neighbors all kind of collectively agree that having some of those cans out is a good thing for their street because it cuts down on some of the unwanted traffic of unnecessary vehicles and things of that nature. And if that's the case, and there's no complaints, this is a complaint-driven policy, we're not going to have a trash can police out roaming the neighborhoods looking for trash cans that, there's just, that's impossible. That's not the intent of this, it's more of raising awareness, and if it's a problem, bring it to us and we'll try to enforce the ordinance. So, I think if, in your case, I don't see it being a problem unless, you know, the neighborhood disagrees and you all, if someone does have a problem, then we need to follow the letter of the law. But if it's working, it ain't broke, don't fix it, type of attitude, in my opinion, and I would defer to that.
So, if I understood what you were saying, you mentioned speeding. Perhaps we could look at some better ways to curtail speeding, whether it's speed bumps in the street, because if there are children playing, because I, my concern is, with trash cans being out and someone accidentally hitting a trash can, which in essence accidentally hits somebody or causes damage, that's a concern. But if we can look at perhaps doing speed bumps in the road, and you're sitting next to our city engineer, you know, we can get your information, perhaps go and look at the street and see what, you know, what are some things that can be done to curtail and stop people from speeding, especially if y'all have children playing around and darting, many kids do what they do. But I, we're not policing trash cans, but I was just a little concerned when you was talking about the speeding aspect and wondering, what can we do to help curtail that? Okay, so it's, that's a thing, okay. And what about?
Speed bump.
You know, I don't know, you know, the signs that, I don't know if it'll help with some people because they just speed, but the signs where it flashes and shows the speed or, yeah, I mean, let's, can we get with y'all?
I'm struck off some things, you got people like Tom Dastison, who's real chairs, who like to come by and do this.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, and you know, those, you can't, those trash cans are there, kind of, you can't, you know, place everything safe on the street, and that is right here and whatnot. So, you know, there are other kinds of people who are walking or, you know, are out there with, or whatever.
Okay, I'm not from any of the streets, so you got, yeah, I'm new. So, you had, so this might sound like a, kind of a, I don't know. Y'all don't have sidewalks, I'm taking it.
Exactly, why not, you're not getting that.
Okay, okay, y'all don't have sidewalks, I got it. So, let us, can we come and look at the street and maybe kind of brainstorm on some things that perhaps we can do to make it safer?
What about the background? How did this start? I don't know if you knew where this kind of came from.
Oh, me?
Why this kind of came up?
So, this is how it started, where I currently live, garbage cans are just sitting there.
Decorating the street.
Yes, ma'am.
Or sidewalk, right, there are a lot of them blocking sidewalks.
Or blocking the sidewalk, I do have sidewalks, they're blocking them. And, you know, it's, not only is it an eyesore, so I, you know, I'll be honest, I'm walking my dog, I'm watching people try to walk in there, having to do this type of thing. dog, I'm, I'm watching people try to walk in there, having to do this type of thing. Um, people also have had tendencies to, um, decide, the, the garbage can is sitting there, and whatever garbage that didn't make it to the garbage cans, I mean, it's, you know, it's, not, we, so the question is, how can we better respect our neighborhoods, and, um.
And there was also language, the language was very specific, that you can't put your can out more than twenty-four hours before, but then there was nothing after that.
Right.
So, it's like, you know, if somebody came to me and said, "Well, Jeff, your trash day is on Thursday, but your can's out from Tuesday, you can't put it out more than twenty-four hours before." "No, but you didn't tell me when I had to pull it back."
Right, right.
"So, it's still there from last week," so, you know, this was really just to clean up that language of putting bookends on it.
Yeah.
But we also made sure that it was very much complaint-driven, it had to be, it had to be a nuisance item with somebody.
My concern is, when it's a teenager's gun, and it comes up with a complaint, that my trash can's sitting there, and there's these signs that are pointing up the street, pointing wheelies, you know, whatever.
The warning.
Yep.
So, that, you know, that's, so that was my, our situation, you know, I have a lady on the street, her husband was a twenty-five-year military man, and he had recent service because of, uh, conditions that the military did serve, brought him to have, and he's, he's very ill, so, and he, they put up a ramp for him, he's lying, and civilians cannot always be there to get things, to work very tough, and because this, this military does not cover all the military, and, you know, that you can't always be down there and put trash can holders, yeah.
Oh, she, she can call us on stuff like that, our, our drivers, we have a, a, ways to address those issues, in other words, we'll, we'll get out our truck and move those back, if, if you let us know that you're either disabled or, or have those type of issues where you can't get out.
They're very busy.
Yeah, yeah, but they will, I mean, if, if they know their address, they will, they will stop and do that, uh, you just need to let us know, just need to let us know.
My biggest concern, too, especially if you have somebody that's popping wheelies, and you have new children on the street, because if there are these trashcans, and a child darts out, and a car doesn't see them, or whomever this is on this motorbike, motorbike.
Do these children, you know, if they're having a person that's activated now, it would be threatened, that provides them space to walk there on the, on the street.
I'm just thinking, if somebody kicks a ball, a car's driving down, and you can't see the child because they're behind the trashcan, I know for myself, my seven-year-old is pretty good about looking across the street, but if she kicks a ball, and it goes across, and she sees it over there, but she doesn't look to see the car, and the car doesn't see her because she's behind the trashcan, you know, that's my, my biggest concern, is the children, and, and if, if you have people unruly driving, I love the idea of a speed bump or something like that to.
Something to look into.
To, to prevent people from driving, just for the safety of the neighborhood.
I have, I appreciate that. They're literally driving down the road in the street.
Right.
And they do that.
And we'll, we'll come take a look, like Renee said, and we always appreciate feedback from our citizens, and we take that to heart, because that means that when you take the effort.
We'll do it.
To come before us, and, and be here and state your concern the way you managed it, that means a lot to us, we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right. Any other discussion on this? Hearing that, I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? And if you would, again, Mr. President.
Uh, yes, um, Mr. Mayor, yes. Um, Bill number sixteen thirty-eight, an ordinance amending Section ninety-four dash one twelve, storage and placement of waste in waste containers, Fulton City Code, by enacting an additional legislate, legislation regarding residential waste containers placement and establishing effective date. I make a motion for Bill number sixteen thirty-eight, the final.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? I'll call for the question, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
And opposed, no? You've all heard the bill read three times, at this time, Madam Clerk, you take roll call for final passage.
All right, Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Sebacher?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative and one absent.
Okay, announcements, we have our next council meeting, uh, next Tuesday, or not next Tuesday, July twenty eighth, uh, G twenty-eight, uh, at six-thirty, and we do have our first annual Juneteenth celebration hosted by the Fulton Human Rights Commission that'll be held this Saturday, uh, yeah, this Saturday, June eighteenth, at Veterans Park at noon to four, and, uh, we're looking forward to that. Uh, one other thing I would mention, that we're looking right now to fill some spots on our boards and commissions for the city, uh, it's a chance to be involved in your, uh, decisions that get made in your city that, that affect you directly, and it's a perfect opportunity to have a, have a voice and, uh, to learn and, and be involved, so, if you, if you're interested, get in touch with me, there's a very simple form to fill out, and we'll get you considered for that. So, other than that, we do have a need for executive session tonight regarding litigation, and we'll do that at this time, I would ask for, uh, a motion to go to executive.
Move to enter executive session to discuss or deal with legal actions, causes of action or litigation?
Second.
Have a motion and a second.
All right, we'll go in with that roll call vote. Ms. Reclu?
Yes.
Ms. Sebacher?
Yes.
Mr. Stone?
Yes.
Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. Combs?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
Yes.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Seven council members affirmative and one absent, we will head to executive session.